Right to the salute flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public announcements, anybody have any public announcements?
This week is yard waste pickup, so I believe they pick it up on your regular trash day. If this is live, you have the rest of the week to do it. If it's not live, I apologize.
Any other public announcements? Okay. Action discussion items, approval of minutes, April 8th, 2013, open and executive session minutes.
I'm just wondering if we could put it off for one week. We had an issue on the both, but more the executive.
All right, so we'll postpone until?
Next time.
Next time, May 13th. Okay, item number two, review and status update of the fiscal year 14 budget process, which is basically why we called the meeting, is so we could get an update from the financial team as to where we stand with the budget. I know they sat with the finance committee last Wednesday and made a presentation, so I was hoping maybe you could do the same for us tonight.
Sure. Has this been handed out to the board?
Yeah.
In front of you, you have about three sheets of paper related to what I'm going to discuss. The first is a revenue estimate, which I'll go through first. The larger sheet is all of the detailed expenses related to the department's budgets. And then there's a single page with a few scenarios. But first, in order to build a budget, we have to have an idea what our estimated revenues are, and that comes in several different sections here. The first being what's known as general fund operations revenue. The bulk of that money comes from our tax base, our real estate tax base, our personal property tax base. And it starts with, since we're talking about FY14, it starts with FY13's tax base. And that's the amount that we were able to tax all the properties in town. To that, we increase it by the statutory 2.5 percent. So that kicks up our expected receipts, in this case by $647,000 and change. The next component is the new growth number, and that comes from the assessors' office. This year, the assessors have estimated a $250,000 new growth number. And the final number in that section is our debt exclusion. And this is the principal and interest that we pay on our debt that had been previously approved by the voters, so that we were able to add it onto the tax base that we're going to raise. Now, so that's where you get your $28,359,974. From that number, there's some items that reduce that revenue. The biggest, in this case, being our snow and ice deficit that we are experiencing in FY13. That's your $531,000 number and change.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Certainly.
Is that final now? Is that the?
It's not, it's not final. There's the possibility that there's some outstanding invoices that might come in that would affect that number by a small amount, but not significantly.
Thank you.
And then there's the allowance for abatements, and that is, again, set by the assessors, the Board of Assessors. When we did review this with the FinCom, it was not a firm number. We had $400,000 in there. The assessors met last week, and they have now finalized that at $380,000. So that's $20,000 to our favor. It kicks our revenue up another $20,000. And this number is a reserve for exemptions, abatements, any senior work-off program and things of that nature that people can apply for. And if granted, this is where that abatement comes from. And then we have overlay deficits, which, Sue, some of these you might need to help out with.
That's the court judgment for Horizon? The principal can come out?
Can you just come up here, Sue?
Actually, if she could.
Yeah, right there, that's fine.
Go through it.
It says actually the court judgment for Horizon, and the principal can come out of your overlay, but your interest cannot, so it's an allowable over expenditure.
And so, because it has to be paid for, and it will come out of the FY14 revenue. So those are all negatives. That reduces our first numbers. The next major section of our revenue comes from the state funds. It's a cherry sheet, and laid out here are all of the expected numbers. You'll notice it totals $939,421. These are not permanent numbers yet. These are the House numbers. The House tends to be conservative, but they have not yet reached the governor's desk, and he has not yet signed off on this revenue. But it's the best estimate that we can use. We need to move forward with it. Their numbers will probably come out within a week or two. Maybe it will be a little bit more favorable to us. If so, that would help us a little bit more. The next area is what we call local receipts. And that's made up, the largest number that makes up that category is our motor vehicle excise tax billings. And you also find interest and penalties that are collected on late payments, fees, licenses and permits, and all of the sundry type things that we bill out locally here. Including in that, included in that section, you'll see the meals tax, which was recently passed last year, which is helping us out in a big way. And we would anticipate roughly $230,000 this year on that number. Last year's number, you can see, was lower, but that's because it didn't encompass a full year. I think we passed it and only had three-quarters worth of collections. So our best estimate right now is a little better than $2,745,000, call it $46,000, that we expect to generate from local receipts. These numbers, many of them are estimates, many of them are built off of the prior year's numbers. And since we're still in FY13, we still haven't achieved last year's numbers. We expect to, from all of the analysis that we've done to date, but you really don't know until the end of the year how well you did. And so, there are also some restrictions placed on cities and towns by the Department of Revenue as to just how aggressive you can get in setting future-year local receipts. And rightfully so, there should be. Next, we have transfers, and these are some incoming transfers from water and sewer?
Water, sewer, ambulance, and conservation.
Water.
Water, sewer, golf, and ambulance.
Well, I was, yeah, I was thinking about the $894,000.
Yes. Those are all like the indirect costs from those departments.
Okay, okay. Because down below, we also have some other funds operating revenue, where we show the conservation, golf, water. But these are all transferred into this ledger from the other enterprise funds and other departments. Because up top, we are showing the full expense of the entire town, not just the general fund. So it's a simple monetary transfer. You sum all of that up, and at this point, that means that we are looking at roughly $45,855,000 in anticipated revenue. You'll also note from that, that that number does not reach what we presently see as our anticipated expenses, which at this point is roughly $46,797,528. If there are no questions on the revenue, we'll jump to that expense, and you can see what makes that up.
Any questions on the revenue ledger?
No, I was at the FinCom, so we've been through it before, so. The only request that I'd have or ask consideration is, as you go through and make adjustments, if you could add another column to just show, you know, here's where we started with revenue, and here, as of 5/14, let's say, or whenever it is, here's what we see now with this, you know, changes to revenue, and also on the expense line, so we can see where we started and where we, you know, we were arriving to, just to help with the process of, you know, maybe not so much on revenue, although it may help if we're getting some increases or decreases, but more on the expense side of the ledger. It's just, it's nice to know that this is where we started as of 5/1 or 5/6. But as that improves or worsens, then we can have a history of what transpired, if possible.
Does that system meal kick that off for us?
You can actually see it in KVS when we run the budget reports.
Yeah, but I-
We have the requested column, the town manager's column, and this, any of these changes that we're going to be making here, we're going to probably put it in as town meeting column.
Right.
So you can see the changes, but, I mean, we can, if you want, every time we change the document.
I just, as I said in previous meetings, I think this is the level of detail that's appropriate for a Board of Directors, where you're just showing lines.
Okay.
I certainly do like to see the KVS and all the footnotes or whatever, but it just kind of helps, because we're sort of on a tight timeline. We've got timeline, we've got four weeks, and I've got to believe, you know, a meeting next Monday is to maybe get snapshots and see how we're improving against each of those expense lines.
Mm-hmm.
If possible, if not, that, you know, that's fine, too.
I have just a question, Leo, and I think you addressed it the other night, but on the additional local receipts, why the variance there?
On which one?
Additional local receipts, last year, $187,961 this year.
Oh, okay.
This coming year, you're estimating $66,661.
Okay. Didn't we determine that to be a school?
It's Medicaid reimbursement is in there and other miscellaneous things. So you really can only count on the Medicaid reimbursement, because miscellaneous is somebody coming in and looking for copies, and we charge them copies. And, you know, there's a lot of different little miscellaneous that you really don't know, that's not a definite thing that you're going to get every year. So you can't really budget for it. So we do have the budget number in there for Medicaid, though.
Thank you.
I'll set to move to expense.
Anybody else?
Okay. The expense is on the larger sheet. Here, we are also showing you FY13's expense, and then the FY14, which has been adjusted by the town manager to get to this point. So these are not necessarily the first pass at what was requested. There have been some things that have been knocked out of the request to get to the town manager's budget as it stands here. However, we still have to knock a great deal more out, because we do have that million $63,000 deficit. So you can see where the town manager stands right now, but what we have laid out is a couple of scenarios, and I might as well explain what the scenarios are prior to going through all, whatever detail you'd want to on this page. If we stand with $1,063,000 as a deficit that has to be made up by the departments, then we have crunched the numbers and have proportionately shown you in this actual deficit column how much each department would have to reduce their expense by in order to cover the full $1,063,000. So we call that the actual deficit. And we are gathering detailed information, specifically as a result of the FinCom's request. When we presented this data to them on Wednesday of last week, they did ask us if we could go gather the details of what it would mean to each department if we had to cut these actual numbers. And we laid out two scenarios for them, and I'll explain what those are, but they've also asked us for the details behind each one of those, and that makes a great deal of sense, actually. Scenario one would result in our requesting a borrowing, if you will, from a stabilization fund of just over $531,000 in order to cover the snow and ice deficit that we have to tack on to this year's budget as a result of the storms that we experienced here in FY13. That was $531,134 at this point. And our proposal under scenario one would be that we take that from stabilization to cover that debt, and that would leave us with a resulting deficit of $532,156 that we then have allocated across the same departments, and this would be the amount that they would need to reduce their expenses by in order for us to have a balanced budget. Scenario two is a slight twist on that. It is a suggestion that we borrow from our stabilization fund only $351,305, and what that number translates into is the average snow and ice deficit that we have experienced over the last five years. Now, because that's a lower amount, that means that out of the budgets, we would then have to cut $711,985, so a larger number. And we are, as I say, gathering all of the specifics, and we would hope to have that for you next week to review, so that you could understand the impacts to the departments. We are gathering that for a presentation to the FinCom this week, and I want to apologize for the fact that we're giving them the information before you folks. It just happens to be the way that the meetings were scheduled, and given the shortness of time, we really don't have any to waste. So whoever wants to hear it as it's first being presented, I believe that'll probably be covered Wednesday night at the FinCom. We, the financial team, and that includes the members of the school department as well, are really focused on scenario one. So I'll say that right up front. And the reason is because we cannot devastate our departments this year for FY14. We've seen that happen in the past. We've all lived through it. It was not a pleasant experience. Our taxpayers weren't happy about the services that they're getting, and if we have to reduce positions again, and in a significant way, I just think that we're going, we all think that we're going backwards instead of forwards. And so, the proposal for scenario one is a temporary utilization of a savings account that we established for just such things, so that we could shore up our budget with the full intent of replacing that money with free cash that we anticipate being certified at the close of FY13. That would be less painful, less harmful to the services that are provided to all of our taxpayers, and we would wind up in the same place after we were able to put it back. Now, I will also readily admit that nobody can guarantee what that free cash number is going to be, but from all review and analysis that we've done to date, it's looking like it's going to come in over that number. And I can't say that absolutely, but I just know from my own department in my other job that, you know, we, I've collected over $500,000 in tax title money this year. We've never hit a number that high. It's just that all the stars were aligned and things are going well. So that translates into free cash. If we hit all of our other estimates and/or exceed some of those, that's a pretty good sign that we're going to have some money available to, you know, as we've said, with the intent of replacing that. But again, to the, to the FinCom's credit, they have asked us to show them the effects of each one of these categories, and that is what we're presently working on and expect to have for them Wednesday. So those are the scenarios. We can go down these expenses, or you can peruse it and ask any specific questions that you'd like. For convenience here, we've, and to try to get all of this on one page, so you have a bird's eye view of it, we have meshed together the salaries and the expense lines of each one of these departments. And again, a lot of this exercise was to primarily determine what percent each department is, so that we could work through these allocation efforts. Yes?
Tom?
Leo, I just want to come back to your free cash comment. I think last year, we had 732?
734,000. I think there is a sheet. I believe it's been passed out to them. You'll have, you have the numbers there. That was a request that I delivered.
I don't see it, but-
Was that, did you get that?
It's a one-pager. Do you have this?
No.
No. But we don't, Leo, we don't need it.
Yeah, well-
Okay. My question is-
Thank you.
Is there an estimate on there for this year?
No, there's not an estimate for this year, but you have the results of the past five years for that and for snow and ice.
Couple of questions. You feel that we're going to have free cash next year for FY14?
At the close of FY13, that gets certified, and once certified, can be used in FY14. Yes.
Do other communities are, is it appropriate to estimate that now for your annual town meeting?
You can't build your budget on it, and that's a forbidden practice, as I understand it.
Okay, so you have to wait to close out the books and-
Yes, yeah.
Have it certified by the state, that then it becomes available?
Then it's usable, yeah.
Okay.
It's a very dangerous practice to build a budget on that.
The other question I have is, just looking at all the expense budgets, it says town manager budget. Now, that's under FY2014?
Yes.
Can I make the statement that that is sort of the department request with maybe some oversight or scrutiny from the town manager?
That would be correct.
Okay. All right, well, let me let you go through each one, if you want, and-
Well, I mean, I didn't really want to read each one, but-
No, I don't, I mean, we have it. I don't think it's necessary, unless you have questions on specific line items, I think that would be.
Well, I guess the question is, in the other night, I think it was last Wednesday, at the Finance Committee, I thought, as tonight, it was an excellent presentation to make the townspeople aware of where we are. But the question came up of, and you just alluded to it, we have a risk here. The risk is, your team, and I can't speak for the whole Board of Selectmen, but I think it's a good idea, is to basically borrow from the stabilization to cut, let's make it round numbers, half of the $1 million in half to $500,000. But the risk is, we saw, it was either two-thirds or a three-fourths vote to move money out of the stabilization to fund the operating budgets.
Yes, it is.
So the question to me comes on, when we look at the budget, for me, June 10th is very late to be going to an annual town meeting. I think there's a lot of things on the warrant. And for me, I think we need to come out of that night with at least a foundation budget, regardless of, you know, the vote on the, you know, the move from the stabilization. Because I feel that, I don't think it will happen, but I think there's a risk that, is it two-thirds or three-fourths?
Two-thirds of town meeting vote.
Of town meeting.
Yeah.
But if people come and, you know, they don't want to move money from the rainy day account-
Right.
-we'd be left kind of hanging, you know?
Well, the worst-case scenario is, we have to make up the actual deficit by reductions in departments, and that is why we will have information that expresses and explains exactly what those cuts mean.
But my only point would be, one other approach would be, is your first vote is on a foundation-level funded something, that basically, you take the 1.63 or whatever it is, and you allocate that over all the budgets.
Well, that's what this is.
Yeah, but it's out of balance by a million. What I'm suggesting is-
No, no, no. The actual deficit column, that's allocating to each department the amount that they would have to reduce their budget by, and if we were not-
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
So it would be the net of these two numbers-
Okay.
-would be their final number.
Right. If that first vote, or if the stabilization vote didn't-
If we were unable to take from stabilization any money, then the departments would have to cut what is in the actual deficit column.
Yeah.
And we will have available for the FinCom, we hope, by Wednesday night, and for you folks next Monday night, what that means to each and every department.
Okay.
It is very important that by the time we reach town meeting, that the FinCom and the Board of Selectmen and the town manager's budget, that we're all in sync on what the approach should be, as far as, you know, are we all supportive that we take money from stabilization for scenario one, or is it for scenario two, or is it not to take it at all? After you know the effects that the town will experience, department by department, I think that's when, when we all need to come together and be in agreement, because if the three entities that I've just mentioned are not in agreement, why would the taxpayers want to select this?
But even saying that, even if each board was in agreement, which I'd make the assumption I shouldn't, that everybody will be-
Right.
-you could get two, 300, 400 voters that will come and say, "We disagree with you."
Correct, correct.
You want to see a budget based on a million-dollar cutback, or whatever it would be-
Right.
-at that point in time.
Yep.
And that's my only comment, is that I want to know procedurally how we're going to handle that. And again, I've seen it in the past, where the first vote, and it doesn't go line by line, you just vote the bottom line, that's the foundation or the worst-case scenario. The second vote is moving the $500,000 back into the budgets. And then potentially, the third would be, if we're still out of balance, if people want to go in, the townspeople, and move more money in-
Right.
-over what we have to spend and put us in an override, then they would have the prerogative to do that.
Well, typically, even in the worst-case scenario, the budget would be balanced, it's just that it wouldn't be desirable. Now, where you then get into the situation that you've just described is if someone isn't happy with the balanced budget, worst-case scenario, and they want to stop moving money from one line item to another. That's where you then get that issue, I think.
But go ahead.
Obviously, the Finance Committee is going to make the first recommendation-
All right.
-because they're the ones who make the presentation to town meeting. So I think it depends on what they're going to recommend. If they're going to recommend scenario one, I'm not sure how they'd present it. I would imagine they'd present it, you know, when the chairman gets up and explains what we're doing. This is what we're going to recommend, and we're going to recommend we take this certain amount from stabilization. If that was the first motion, then we'd know one way or the other whether or not that money is going to be able to be appropriated at that point in time. But I think that's something you have to work out with the Finance Committee and the town moderator-
All right.
-as far as how the procedural aspects would go.
I agree, and I think that's probably the way it would go down, but my only question is, if it gets voted down, where are we then? Are we going to, we're going to have another column that, you're going to say, "Okay, then go down and change the town meeting to this number, the selectmen," or are you going to have another column that would have what that amount would be?
Well, I think you do, right? As you said, you have the actual deficit number-
Okay.
-which I would guess at that point I-
I think I see where you're going. You're really talking about, what are we going to present to the voters? Is it just going to be a single amount which was, which hinged off of, say, scenario- Is it just going to be a single amount which was, which hinged off of, say, scenario one? Or are we gonna have another document with all of the amounts for each department, if it was hinged off of scenario two, and then a third one, if it was the actual deficit?
Yeah, and maybe the third one doesn't go, but this is just for me personally.
Yes.
When I look at those three columns, the deficit, they're not speaking to me, as opposed to if you had another column that would say, "Okay, for, we'll pick on selectmen. Instead of 353,776, there'd be a budget there for approximately 341,000, because we're reducing it by 12,800."
Right.
And that's, and if you, if you apply that to all of them, that's, that's your budget tonight that is gonna be in balance with your revenue.
Yep.
That, that's all I'm saying, is I'm just concerned...
Yeah, that, that is, of course, depending upon whether, let's just say, as I hope we do, that everyone supports scenario one. What would be presented on town floor would be, by these departments, the line would be expanded, because you'd have the salary line and you'd have the expense line, but those numbers would total this, this manager's budget minus the cuts that we had to make in scenario one. So you'd have those dollar amounts, and that's what we'd be voting on. If, if everybody was, and if that's what the finance committee's recommendation was, and everybody else supports it. Then I think, you know, we do get into the issue of if they don't, and then, in that case, perhaps we have a, more printouts of a scenario two, and then a full deficit, if, if we had to. I, I don't know, I haven't been through that yet.
Yeah, but the possibilities are endless, 'cause they, they could say, "No, we don't want to," but then someone could get up and say, "For the police, I wanna borrow money from, and for this, I do wanna..." So the, the scenarios are endless. I have no problem with, you know, maybe two scenarios, you know, the, the scenario one and the no borrowing at all, and then they work between the two of them.
Yeah. 'Cause again, I, I think we don't wanna come out of June 10th with, you know, not a budget.
No, I, I don't think that will happen.
But I, I do think, if, if you just start throwing deficits around, as opposed to giving them an actual budget if it doesn't fail, then I can see fights in town floor, people are gonna try to move it into the school versus the police, versus the fire, versus whatever. And it'd be nice to have that laid out or have that voted first. And then we go to the next scenario, which is the 500,000. And then bang, we've got a budget that, you know, we can open up the town on July 1st. And then hopefully, if, you know, we certify free cash, there could be some additional money to, you know, take care of, you know, issues.
The town's gonna open up July 1st, no matter what happens.
Well, that's true, but...
Will you give orders to go in and, with your actual deficit, have a worksheet? If you guys don't agree to this, then these are the cuts that are gonna happen to these departments, additional cuts, and these are what's gonna affect your services, rather than saying an additional budget line item. You give them two physical budgets to vote on, there might be a little...
I agree.
...on the floor. But if they say, "Okay, no, we don't wanna use this," okay, then these are the additional cuts that we've already planned on, and this is where they would be, now you can vote them out.
And the finance committee, again, is gonna make their recommendation. That's what the whole thing is based on, the finance committee's recommendation. If the finance committee's recommendation is scenario one, and the town goes with it, fine. If they don't, then somebody's gonna have to get up there and make a proposition, "I don't like that particular line item, I wanna reduce it." Okay, why? And, you know, you're gonna have a debate. I'm not sure you can, the finance committee is gonna be able to cover every, like Kenny said, every single scenario. Their, their presentation is, this is what we think is best. This is what we recommend to the town. If other people think differently, and you've seen it many times, I mean, people get up and make motions, and they, sometimes they pass and sometimes they don't. But I, I wouldn't expect that the finance committee would have to come up with three different scenarios or three different budgets. That, to me, doesn't seem like it would be.
Well, no, it's, it's basically what Sue's saying, it's just a different format. It's, it's, if this doesn't go through, if everybody's on board with moving the 500,000, here's what the budgets will be.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If you don't, we need to let people know what that means. And whether you show another column that says, "Okay, we're gonna reduce the selectmen by X number of dollars," then, you know, people will have that information. My sense is, there'll be some, you know, frustrating on town meeting floor to move some from...
Why don't, why don't we do this? I understand what your request is. Let us look at the capabilities of, of our software package and how we can present things, and we'll come back next Monday.
And I, I would also ask you to discuss it with the finance committee and see what they feel comfortable with, because again, it's their...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's their meeting, it's, you know, it's a...
If, if we all agree on, on a budget, then I would like to go into town meeting with that budget, and have a backup plan ready, even if it's a separate handle, "Okay, that didn't fly, let's try this."
An informational packet of, "Okay, this isn't gonna work out, no one wants to vote for that money, this is what's gonna happen." And have it next to the warrant, you know, informational packet, you know, based on...
And, and what each cut will, after you guys decide, you know, after you hear from the department heads what this cut means, and then have that, right, this, this $20,000 cut, you know, translates to, you know, to employees or part, you know, that sort of thing.
And like Leo said, we want one unified budget, we're trying to prevent the horse trading on town meeting floor.
I agree, yeah.
Still see issues?
Well, they will, they always are, it's, you know, all, all we do is, and that's not even else, again, I'm gonna go back, the finance committee makes a recommendation, it's up to town meeting whether or not they wanna approve that or not, they...
So we, it, look, okay, I'll play devil's advocate one more time, and I'll let it, I'll let it lie. Okay, let's pick on the big one. The police would have to shave, let's call it 52,000 dollars. We don't move it over. Okay, somebody gets up and says, "No, we're not doing that," and the town meeting votes to leave the police budget the same. What are you gonna do with that 50,000 dollars? How are you gonna allocate that across other budgets? Are you gonna put that in a state of an override?
If someone gets up and makes a recommendation, it's always been past practice that you have to say where the money's coming from.
Correct.
That's always been past practice.
That's true.
Well, otherwise, you have a...
I'm not sure if I agree with that one.
Otherwise, you're in an unbalanced situation.
Yeah.
And they can do, and actually, the town meeting can do that.
Right.
They could do that if they want, and they've done it in the past. They've done it over, over a finance committee budget. Let me just finish, Tom.
I'm sorry.
Three years ago, I think there was a, a budget presented by the finance committee that was balanced, and there were, people got up on town meeting floor, and the town meeting prevailed, and the budget was higher than what the finance committee had recommended, and put us in an override situation. That can happen. That can happen. But again, the finance committee makes their best presentation, that's all they can do. We make our recommendations, but it's up to the people who come to town meeting.
Okay. Well, that holds together, so you're saying if, if...
Thought you were gonna let it lie after the...
Well, no, I just wanna clarify. If, if the people move the 50,000 in the police budget, the police is in, the, the police department's in a deficit of 50,000.
The town's in the deficit.
Okay, so beautiful. What happens then? They go to the ballot box, people aren't gonna vote a 50,000 dollar override. We come back, and we're at square one.
Well, someone could make the scenario that I want an extra 50,000 to go to the police department, and I want to come out of stabilization.
Okay, but let's say they don't.
But you can't cover that, I mean, how can, you can't cover each and every scenario, that's town...
I think it's happened before, Andy, if you go back.
What?
That if you go into an override situation, and you haven't voted a, let's call it foundation or a contingency budget, if the, if the ballot box fails, then you come back and you start at square one.
But that, that was incongru, that's when a, when the finance committee actually proposed that to happen. They've proposed, "Let's pass this budget, but if it doesn't pass, then we'll make a contingent..." But that's not somebody getting up on the floor of town meeting and making those recommendations. That, that was the plan by the finance committee, and that happened two years ago.
And that could still happen this year.
So that, that's not just somebody getting up from the audience and, and making that recommendation. The finance committee in the past has said, "We're gonna present two budgets, we're gonna present one with an override and one without an override, we're gonna recommend the one with the override pass, but if the override doesn't pass at the election, then the one that passed..."
Exactly.
But that was because it was proposed that way. That's not, if, if, and again, if the finance committee proposes it that way, that's a different story. But for somebody to get up and just say, "No, I wanna take money from here and put it here," I think Kenny's right, first, you're supposed to, I think past practice has been, show us where it's coming from, so we stay in balance. But if not, and we get in, put in an override situation, then...
You explained it beautifully, you know exactly where I'm coming from and that. If one doesn't pass, you wanna make sure that we've got something else in place and, you know, let it go, and see what the finance committee comes up with.
I think, yeah, I think we'll see what the finance committee...
I just wanna express my thoughts.
It's fair to say, though, that all these scenarios require, without taking money from stabilization or an override, we're not gonna have a balanced budget. Is that...
No, that's, that's not true. The actual deficit would inflict severe cuts to departments and personnel count.
What I mean is, the scenario one and scenario two, and more than likely...
Is built contingent upon borrowing from our stabilization, yes.
Okay.
And, and I think it's worth mentioning that if and, and when we cut personnel, people should realize that, I'm just gonna use a round figure for easy math, if we had to cut 100,000 in personnel, we've only cut, really, 64,000, because 36,000 is gonna be our bill from unemployment. And so, when you cut people, it's not a very efficient way to manage your money and your resources. So we try to avoid that at all costs, because there's a lot of wasted money involved in that.
If, if you know, and I don't know if you know at this point, if scenario one were the one to be adopted by town meeting, would that result in personnel layoffs or...
I don't think, we don't have all of that information. It would definitely result in, in a lower salary number. Some departments, that might be coming from overtime, but there, there are issues with that. And some of the issues would involve collective bargaining, if it was, in fact, possible to even do. In certain other departments, you know, it could mean a headcount, even on scenario one, some of your bigger departments.
But you'll know that in the next day or two.
We should, yes.
For Wednesday night, is the plan?
We hope to.
Have the department heads been given any timeframe to get back with?
Yes, a lot of them have already responded. We've asked them to respond by tomorrow morning. We've already got a lot of stuff back already. We just need to now, and our plan is tomorrow, to, to begin to go through that, assemble it, possibly even analyze it and ask certain other questions of, you know, do we need to go this route, or have we thought of something else? And then put it all together, and then we'll be presenting it.
Any other questions or comments?
Um, I just...
I did wanna reiterate, this, I think, Tom, you said to, this is to supplement the operating budget, but the, the premise here is, this is not supplementing the operating budget going forward. This is to make up for, basically, the snow and ice deficit that we carry.
The, the borrowing from stabilization? The borrowing from stabilization is to pay the deficit of the snow and ice, so that...
This, this figure isn't being built into the budgets as far as going forward, it's to, it's, again, the snow and ice deficit for this particular...
That's, that's what the proposal is, and the reason, rationale behind borrowing from stabilization. You can't build an ongoing budget by borrowing from stabilization, because ultimately, you wouldn't have anything left. And, and again, the plan is, you know, the, the thought and the intent here is a temporary borrowing, because we'd like to see it replaced. No one wants to and likes to have to take from our savings account, but it is, I think, we think, the lesser of many evils when it comes to having to cut our personnel and therefore impact our services and deliverables to all taxpayers, in many areas.
And I think, excuse me, Leo, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what your, your point is that it's not going into the operating budget per se, it's the deficit that, we may not have that deficit next year. So that would, it would go away. I think that's, that's the point.
I, I do have another point with the snow and ice deficit, Billy. If you look at the history here...
Yes.
We're, we're budgeting way below what, and I know, once you set the figure, you can't go below that, but I think to set the figure, $100,000 is probably not...
Well, well, if you look at FY12, you know, we almost, we almost came in at 100,000. And, and what he was just alluding to is, if we build in a snow and ice number, you can never, let's, right now, I think it's 100,000.
100,000.
That means that we can never reduce that number, or we lose the ability to deficit spend in that category. So if we built it at 150,000 going forward, it would always have to be 150,000. If we found ourselves only spending 100,000, well, we've wasted 50,000 dollars in building that year's current budget. Because it would be allocated for that. Now, I guess it would wind up as free cash at the end of that year, but you would have impacted your budget by 50,000, and if we were in a tight year, and we really needed that somewhere else, you wouldn't be able to use it. And once you build 150, you stay with that. You tried to go back to 100, you can no longer deficit spend in the future. So that's, that's the risk there.
It is, but again, if you, if you look at these figures, and these are the deficits, these aren't what was spent, correct? These are the deficits, on top of the 80 to 100 that we budgeted, they've all...
Top of appropriation.
So I, I think, in the future, and I know the former town manager was trying to do that, we went from 80 to 100, but in the future, I think we need to look at beefing that number up, only because we can find ourselves in this situation every two or three years, drawing on stabilization, which I don't think is...
Yeah, if you look at the numbers, it looks like every other year, we, we get walloped.
Yes.
Well, we got global warming coming, so...
I, I was gonna say that, but I...
Solves that problem.
Tom?
Leo, on the, the snow and ice, the 531, that's after the 100,000, so it's really 631?
Yes.
Just help me again, I, I know there was some banter earlier, not banter, but discussion, I should say. And I think the highway superintendent wrote us a letter to petition the state, and we had Senator Keenan down and Representative Deal, and they had indicated to give them our expenses from that first snowstorm, let's call it the blizzard in February. And the state was considering some form of reimbursement, and I don't know if that's something we can run to ground by maybe contacting Senator Keenan or Representative Deal's office to see if there's any movement there. I thought I heard a rumor, other towns, there's been some money moved in to the...
We can certainly look at that, or check into...
Mostly for the tree removal part, I thought.
Yeah. But, you know, maybe there's something else out there. Yes, no?
They, they actually did do some FEMA reimbursement on that, but it wasn't for snow removal, it was for fallen trees, storm walls, things like that, police overtime and emergency overtimes and things like that. They did not cover any of the snow deficit on that.
Did we get anything?
We did, we have two grants that are coming in, 13,000 for hi, I think it was highway, and 9,000 for police and fire.
And that's been incorporated into this?
No, 'cause that, what happens with that, if, if we get it in this year, then we'll reduce their expense line item, it'll be part of your free cash next year. If we get it in next year, again, it'll become part of your free cash the following year.
So you have to wait till it hits?
Right.
Thanks, sir.
I hate to, I hate to use this word, but now, taking, taking free cash in the fall to pay back the stabilization, it's gonna snowball, right? I mean, that'd be less money to use for the capital plan.
That's true.
Correct. Now, is, is a capital plan this year, is that already, is it a big year for capital items, or is it a standard? Is there a little less that, you know, that, the needs?
I couldn't give you an accurate answer, I don't know if anyone else can. I, I haven't looked at that in a while, I've studied that.
I know we have a few needs, I know we have the fire antenna that we're trying to do, and then there's always, you know, police cars and the usual...
There's always something, but I...
But I don't know of anything, you know, extraordinary for capital.
Routine stuff, but it's gonna, it is, you're right, Ken, it is gonna eat into the ability to purchase those items.
It hasn't been prepared yet, has it?
No.
But isn't that a five-year plan, or is it...
Yeah, we have, we have an internal plan that, that we send to the departments, and then they update with what doesn't get funded, and it changes.
And sometimes their priorities change from one year to the next.
Yep.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Ken, anything else? Okay, so we have a, a meeting next Monday, which, by that time, we'll have some more detail as to where these cuts will take their effect
Close, close enough.
if, in fact, they go through. Um, and the Finance Committee meeting Wednes-?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, but you're meeting, but Wednesday with the Finance Team?
Actually, both days.
Both nights.
Oh, yeah, both.
Probably on Tuesday, we would be looking at, well, they set the agenda, but I, I believe from what I read, they'd be looking at the other non-money items on the warrant.
All right. Do you have anything else to add, Leo, or...
No, I don't think so. Other than, I believe you asked me one question earlier on. You were interested in knowing how much of our debt is coming out of our levy
Yes.
as opposed to debt exclusion. Um, there are two items, it's the Memorial Arch, and it's the Groveland Street purchase. And in, in FY14, there's $94,176, 177 rounded off, that is tapping against our levy, and, you know, that only serves to reduce available revenue for our other expenses. Fortunately, all of our other debt is a debt exclusion, or it's related to the enterprise funds, which they fund directly. Now, of these two items, the Groveland Street won't roll off until after FY17, and that's going to be, therefore, roughly $33,000 a year. Uh, it'll start to decline a little bit because of a lower principal, and the interest won't be as much, but it's going to be roughly 30, $33,000. And the Memorial Archway, um, this is the first year that we anticipate having to pay anything for that, so that's going to be a, a five years out. And that's a, a little larger piece, that's 61,200. These items...
That'll be for five years?
This, this, yes, that'll be for five years, so that won't roll off until after FY18. Now, these two items are things that we could go to the, to the ballot box on, if you so elected to do so, to see if, if the voters would approve moving these off of the, out of the levy and making them debt exclusions. And we did do that
We did that.
in years past with one of the school...
About three or four years ago, yeah.
Yeah. You know, as a matter of, of practice, um, we really shouldn't be approving debt that's going to hit our levy. We should always, I think, try to make them a debt exclusion, unless there's no other alternative. But, uh, each and every time we do that, we're just narrowing that window of, of how much we have available for the other expenses.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice if you can do it, but
Yeah.
the way that the budgets are so tight in these, these past few years, it's...
It's kind of working against ourselves, because we worked so hard to create extra money
Right, right.
with the meals tax, and with saving money in the trash, and then it's gobbled up with these things, so...
Exactly.
I would think that maybe if we have to, if there's a, maybe plan, you obviously don't want to have a special election for that, but maybe if next year's town election, or...
That's what we did last time.
Yeah, perhaps the next time that there's a scheduled vote on something
Something to look at.
the board might want to look at it and perhaps, um, consider it, and if you put forth a favorable vote, it could then be joined with another ballot, so we wouldn't be holding a separate one.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. You, you guys all set?
I think, uh, we're good.
All right. So, we have Town Manager's report, if you have one.
Before you give that, excuse, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but a lot of people there in TV land, you don't have a nameplate, and they probably don't know who you are, because a lot of things have happened in the last week, it's only, if it's appropriate, you can introduce yourself to, to people in TV land?
Gee, I, I was trying to stay anonymous. I will promise to have a nameplate the next time. I'm Leo Provost. Uh, I am the treasurer-collector and have been appointed for about a six-week period as the interim town manager. And I'm counting the days.
Thank you.
Thanks. And that's your Town Manager's report, I guess, Lee?
Yeah, you promised, you let me have that. Previous one.
Public comment, any public comment? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Is that the Town Manager's report?
That's the Town Manager's report.
That was it?
Well, that was basically the budget, was the Town Manager's report.
Wow, I'm just not used to that.
Only Ben, yeah. Motion to adjourn, Tom? Second section, any discussion? If not, all those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Before you take that one vote, I've, I've been reminded of something, and that is that, um, um, there appears to, to have been information received that would be a modification to one of the articles
Correct.
that's, that's in the warrant, and a, a potential addition of an article.
Correct.
So, these are, um, some items that I, I think we'd want to put on to the agenda for next Monday night.